Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We need to see some more to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I have one in executive session for two personnel matters. You can put that after other business. Anything else? Step in.
What would you, what's your reason?
Two personnel matters.
Two personnel.
Oh, first I want to say if anybody is joining us on Zoom, just speak up and give us your full name, please, when you're ready to speak. Step into the minutes of the meeting of October 14.
I'll approve the minutes as per me. Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the minutes of the meeting of October 14. Is there any discussion?
Just real quick, what 6D White Town Hall changes? Does that mean something or is it just a note or something?
A discussion for elections, you mean?
Yeah, and it said Seattle Town Hall was underlining.
It's underlined in bold, but maybe to make sure people notice it?
Because it's a, it's a daring attempt. I just think if anybody was reading the minutes, it's different.
It'd stick out like. That's good, thank you.
Well, you got me to ask a question, so you do good.
Craig will know where to go.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're accepted. Communications and public comments. Deerfield Valley CUD.
Hello?
Hello?
Is it our time?
It's your time. It's your time.
Steven Jones, my name. I'm the best chair of the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District. Are you ready for that piece of business?
Yes, yes, we're ready for you.
Pleased to be here. I think Jeff Satch, a representative from London area, is also attending these services on the board, the government board of the Deerfield Valley CUD. And did you introduce yourself or?
I didn't, no. Hi, hi, guys. I'm Lisa Colby. I live in Westminster. So I'm just really interested in this product. I'm hoping you can get on board, get Westminster on board for us. So.
Thank you.
Lisa Colby, I'm sorry.
Lisa Colby.
Lisa Colby.
Okay. What's your presentation?
It's a little hard to hear. Y'all, I don't think there's anything.
Is that better?
Just speak as loud as you can.
That might be a little bit better, but I don't know if that's.
Yeah, we can hear you, which is the important thing at the moment.
Okay, got it.
Were you going to give us a presentation?
Well, yes, I can say a few things. I turn up the volume. I hope I can hear you better now. Certainly want to welcome any of your questions. I'm the representative on the DBCUD government board, appointed by the select board Marlboro. And we were one of the first towns to vote as a town by public vote at town meeting, the first five towns before the Deerfield Valley CUD, pursuant to the statute that enabled towns to get together to, to, you know, probably get ensured that broadband is available to IC broadband access to the Internet is available to all residents. That's the goal, and that was the goal and sole purpose of the legislature, enabling towns to form communications union districts. The concept is similar to, if anybody's been involved with one of them, Solid Waste, or with Water District, or Sewer Treatment, that Sewer District in other towns. The concept is that, well, what's unique about this, what's the same is that we're tasked with a specific purpose and one purpose only. The thing that's a little bit different about this, the kind of CUD in Vermont, communications union district in Vermont, is it has no taxing authority, has no ability to hold any taxpayer or resident in any town life. That's, I think, very reassuring, certainly was to the members of the residents of Marlboro, because after all, what if this is a particular effort, this initiative, and however collaborative and cooperative it may be, or it fails, what, what role the liability is? So the law is very clear on that. I can read the law too, if you like, but all of the law that pertains to communications union district is the statute, the Title 30, the public service, Chapter 82, communications union districts, and then it goes on for the various topics, formation, district composition, creation, duration, non-ameending testability, district powers. We'll move right away to the issue of formation. The first five towns formed and were obliged to take action to elect at their own representatives, appointed by the select boards, meet and form the communications union district. That happened on April 9th of this year. So we haven't been at work very long. But since that time, we have now 16 member towns. And 17 will be, the 17th will be voted in and accepted at the next meeting on November 11th. That will be done. So the way other, these other towns are joined is by virtue of a vote by a select board. And it's a simple motion, and a vote up and down. And then if that's a positive, then the next step is for the board to appoint a representative to represent the town. And that person has the one vote that any town has on the governing board of the communications union district. And also, the law also suggests and recommends that an alternate, one or two alternates be appointed to ensure that Westminster is represented and casts a vote on any particular decision at all board meetings. I can read you about the taxation on taxes and indebtedness, if you like. It's pretty clear, Section 3056. I think you may have received, well, I can't say. Notwithstanding any grant of authority in this chapter of the contrary, the district shall not accept funds generated by members taxing or assessing power. Also, B, the district shall not have the power to levy, assess, apportion, or collect any tax upon property within the district nor upon any of its members without specific authorization of the General Assembly. The General Assembly is the legislature. Vermont legislature. Notwithstanding, the, every issue of the district's notes or bonds shall be payable only out of the revenue or monies of the district. Now, the sole source of income for the communications district is a subscription fee, an addition to the subscription fee for the service. And that would be the money that would pay back any indebtedness, because obviously some money has to be borrowed to build a fiber Internet infrastructure sufficient to meet all the unserved and underserved residents of our communities of member towns. You're obliged to appoint a representative on the last Monday in April, so that in May, when the annual meeting happens for CUDs, oh, they're not communication union districts throughout the state. And in May is our annual meeting, segment Tuesday in May. And that's when the newly appointed representatives would organize and elect chair and vice chair and so forth. The terms are only one office. The board would have to decide to renew, reappoint, or appoint someone else to represent Westminster. You can replace a representative or alternate by your vote and your decision in the board. The other thing that people ask about is how do you get out if it doesn't work? If, if you join, the town votes to join by virtue of select board motion, then that's the way the town would withdraw, by select board motion and approval by the, by the board of all the, one representative from all the other towns. It's unlikely there'd be any objection to the town withdrawing, because there's no tax loss, there's no advantage one way or the other. So if the town doesn't feel like it's being served, from my point of view, I can't see how Marlboro would ever go to, to lead, but certainly the representative of Marlboro would certainly not mind any, any town leading. It just means that you have one less town involved. The business plan we have presently approved by the PSD is only based on 15 towns being members, and that group is certainly financially viable, because it has sufficient critical mass of customers eager and actually hungry for service to be able to manage this on its overtime or incremental build proposition. I think I'll quit unless you guys have some questions. I hope that's covered the major issues for you. The, and there's no particular reason for me to be lobbying or trying to persuade you of anything. I'm just here to answer questions. We certainly welcome the King of the House. The, one thing the law says is that we have to have an annual report reviewed by the member, the legislative bodies of the member towns, and that means the select boards of the member towns. And they are able to review and comment at a public hearing that will be November 11th. That, that will also be our, that will be Veterans Day, but that also happens to be our governing board, our governing board meeting. And we picked that date because the law said we had that done before the 15th, so we moved up our, our initial meeting schedule.
So I have a question. Susan Harlow. My question's broadly, the way this would work is that the representatives would vote to borrow money to build the network, and then the money would be paid back by the subscriptions of the users of the service? Is that broad enough?
That's correct. Yeah, that, that's correct. The law permits us to borrow money on a revenue bond. That means that we have to have some top customers first. So the initial hurdle for this group will be to come up with grants, which we have applied, and they have, we have been successful to a very insufficient degree, but our present budget, our present report reports on an $18,000 dollar. And we certainly look forward to the COVID money being extended during the deadline, because the deadline on COVID relief money actually connecting people before December 20. And so that's impossible for us to take advantage of. However, Comcast and some other ISBs have certainly made some, got some grants from the Public Service Department to extend their lines to better serve people that have not been served today.
So you would get grants, and then you would also have, find customers who would pledge that they would subscribe, and then when you had enough subscribers, then you would begin to build? Is that the idea?
Yeah, yeah. The only thing that's a little strange is that we wouldn't collect the money. We would, we would be determined to have our employees and, and, you know, build knowledge of the bureaucracy. What we, what we really seek, find is the best path, which has been followed by EC Fiber up north, receives us in terms of 10 years of experience with this, is they can contract out for the, for the design, for the bill, for the actual service. And that service provider might be, well, conceivably, it could be CCI, it could be GWI, you know what they're called, Tilson. There are lots of, lots of possibilities, and certainly it would be competitive bid situation in terms of response to our, our RFP. But that is the next critical stage of our, of our steps to success as a element in the business plan.
Thank you.
Kevin Hughes. How are you? You mentioned a revenue bond.
Yeah.
Why don't you explain that to the group, will you?
Okay. Our neighbors in New Hampshire towns, they may have read, Chesapeake, New Hampshire, was able to sign a contract with CCI, Communication, to build out their entire town in, in fiber. Prior to forming the CUD, my own town Marlboro was considering doing the same thing, and we interviewed the former select boards in charge of that project. So what happened there is that New Hampshire made a law, changed, had new laws about the same timeframe as our CUD law in Vermont, that enabled towns to borrow money, municipal bond, to build fiber infrastructure and help communication network. And so they, they borrowed the money from the, in the bond, they voted bond, and in that case, the taxpayers are liable for that bond, right?
Right.
And theoretically, I'm surprised that this didn't happen in Chesapeake's case, but Chesapeake did own the infrastructure, even though they paid for it. But four towns that followed in New Hampshire, including Dublin, have made a sharper deal with Consolidated, and, and they will retain ownership of the infrastructure for which they borrowed the money to have built. They do sign a contract with CCI to enable CCI to be the service provider, and therefore gain some revenue from the deal over a period of time. So a revenue bond is, is not that. A revenue bond is based upon the revenue raised for the service, and that's what pays back indebtedness on the, on the borrowing.
Was it structured, was it?
It's not possible, it's not possible for a CUD to do that without having some people connected that are supporting revenue stream.
I got it. Let me ask you a quick question. Do you, are you skilled enough to know, was this structured as a municipal bond with a municipal mechanism? Meaning it's a tax-free municipal bond issued through the state with the state parameters of New Hampshire? Do you know those answers or not?
I don't know. I, I think I'm on thin ice there in answering New Hampshire. But I know that taxpayers were liable to that. I think in the arrangement that Dublin made, they tried to, they got Consolidated Consumer, Consolidated Communications to guarantee the repayment of the bond, of the taxes, you know, the interest on the bond. And so they, but they stipulated that they will own the infrastructure in the end. This is rather important to those with towns that have already joined in this sector, because we see no hope or prospect of private sector reaching all of the residents or all of the locations in our communities.
Understood.
They're, pick off the ones that are the closest to the main roads, or at least the densest population areas, where there's a profit margin that can sustain and justify their investment, their capital investment upfront that has to be undertaken.
Sure. I don't want to take up too much of your time with, with the board's time. I just, so where would one go to get information on this capital structure under the revenue bond? Do you know where I could go to get my own answers?
Well, are you referring to how the revenue bond's going to work to the CUD?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Paul Giuliani is our lawyer. His office up north in Public Mill, Eli is actually our person. And the, we, I know that there is language available to be used in such a closing of bond. We were solicited by already specialists in that business, and we interviewed them with the vendor committee, but we haven't taken any steps on that, because we're not ready to borrow any money. The first one to do a bar would be under a retail loan, which would run probably to about $4 million. And that would be our best opportunity, at least now, without having revenue.
One last question. I thank you for your very succinct synopsis, really do. And as, if towns were to join, based on what you know, not having a CUD before you, am I, would, am I to understand that the towns that join would then be somehow subject to liability for the bond, or no?
No. No, we're, and that's what's really interesting about this compared to New Hampshire. In our case, the communications union district is considered a municipal entity, a new municipal entity comprised, basically being governed by a board that has one vote from every town, and that's it. They have the sole authority to plan, to issue contracts, to accept donations in fact for charitable, you know, for charitable effort. And so there are tax advantages for people to donate. And also, it's possible that there will be some private, private notes, there'll be some private borrowing. But we're certainly not, we have to be very careful not to borrow money, because we don't have revenue sweeping to repay the interest. So this is going to take, you know, this is going to take a while. The more towns we have, the larger the project. But on the other end, the more towns we have, the folks who are getting the ambition of serving everyone, and, and the more resources we have in terms of volunteers and, and financial support.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Any other questions?
Go.
I just would like to mention that in your package, you have a letter from Pat Morland from the town of Bradaburrow. Goes into some very detailed information about it. And then you have a memorandum from Robert Fisher Squire, representing the union district. So what we do from here is up to you, folks. We have fallen flat on two different fronts, trying to get service to our residents from different avenues. And this seems to be the only avenue that, that has the ability to move forward. Comcast and Consolidated are not talking to individuals nor small community groups. So the, the CUD, as he said, carries more clout than, say, just Westminster by themselves. So something to think about. Lisa is willing to, to keep you abreast of what's happening. And I don't want to speak for you, Lisa, if you're still there.
Maybe you get a contact information. If we have any questions for the next meeting, we can get them answered and put it on the agenda for next meeting and see if we're ready.
Perfect, thank you.
About, is it reasonable?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Lisa Colby. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll talk later, Lisa. Great. Call anytime. Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, good. Unfinished business, school consolidation withdrawal action. Mr. Major, assuming that's why you're here?
That's why I'm here. On the side of your package, you have the information that David shared with, for you guys. It was, came in a little late, and I'd already created the package, so that's why it's beside it. So I, together with a number of other townspeople, I put together a petition, and we have the required number of signatures, which is, we have over 130 signatures, that were verified at the town office today.
There you are.
And so I am here to present you with that, also to share this sort of draft. Well, first off, I, I think what this means is that the select board has to take action now to hold a special town meeting to consider the withdrawal of Westminster from the unified district of Athens, Grafton, Westminster. And then if the, if the, if Westminster voters approve the withdrawal, then Athens and Grafton have to vote on the same day to, to obey that withdrawal from the district. They're, they're pushing very hard for Westminster to get on with it, because they want, they want to do that. So, or at least the town authorities that I keep hearing from do. So there's a couple of notes about that. One is that this sort of draft set of articles that Fletcher Proctor dreamt up is, is something to consider, probably something to run by Larry Slayson before you actually declare, or maybe not. I mean, Fletcher, Fletcher do this up, so. And, but you'll see a letter in your package, you'll see a letter from Larry Slayson about this, this potential withdrawal. And it's addressed to, "Good afternoon, Cheryl, Cheryl Charles, and Jack Brier, Jack Brier from Westminster." The, just a couple of notes about it. In it, he goes through those steps that I just described. But he says, he notes in the second paragraph that Greensboro and Halifax have already held special town meetings and approved articles for the withdrawal of those towns from their merged district. The matter is pending, or was pending, before the State Board of Education. I do not know the present status of that matter. The present status of that matter is the State Board of Education approved that withdrawal. So that's just a, an update on that piece of information. And the second thing that I'll note is that the legislature, just in their last sort of out-of-season session that they had because of COVID, passed a law which the governor just signed. It allows select boards to call an Australian ballot without, without needing to have a special town meeting to get permission from the town voters to do that. So, so on a theoretical level, you could call, you could either call a special town meeting, or you could call an Australian ballot to consider these, these arguments. I think that's all I have to.
I have one written in this letter, David, says, "It is my opinion, blah, 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 that it has authority to vote to withdraw from the force merger if one year has elapsed since the Union School District became a body politic." Is that?
That's the case, since it's been a year and a half.
Ah, okay.
Can I ask you? It says, Larry Slayson, "I recommend your study committee carefully go over the financials and all that." Who's our study committee?
Oh, you got me.
Okay. And second is, let me be honest, there's two reasons why you would do this. Simple. Either quality of education is going to get better or the cost will go down. Is this going to happen in both cases when we leave?
Well, what has happened in, in the, so far in this, since we were forced to merge in, at the end of, or the beginning of July, a year and a half ago, is that the, there's, there's been no appreciable. been no appreciable ability to for the Grafton, school in Grafton, to work with the school in Westminster, just because the the distance is too far apart. You can't share, you know, third graders can't go back and forth or or whatever, it just doesn't, there's no no sense that way. And the the budget for this year is going up over 5%, which is a fairly significant increase. We haven't been able sensibly, it's kind of obviously enough, we haven't haven't been able to see a a efficiency come out of this merged district just because of the distance and the and the. So so both the the kind of educational outcomes have remained unchanged, that we haven't been able to to increase the the offerings or the ability to in the Grafton School because of its it's being run together with Westminster or vice versa. And the and the economics have have not changed or or may have gotten worse. The other thing is that there is a much less community participation in the schools, both in the Grafton, Athens Grafton, Aff Graft School, and in the Westminster School because we have because there's less power, there's less there's less in on the part of the towns to be involved with their schools. We have just two people in Westminster, two people in Athens, two people in Grafton running the schools together, and you don't have the sort of town school board situation where people can come in and say their piece and and deal with their specific school. So yeah.
You don't think COVID-19 also went back?
COVID-19 throws a whole other loop into it. But even prior to COVID-19, it 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 seemed like what we were seeing, which was about a year, was less, less community participation or even ability of the community to participate.
So I got a question as a taxpayer, more than anything. So if Westminster withdraws, it's in Athens and Grafton, does it automatically go back to the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union?
Yes, yeah. It would still be, it doesn't change our our position in the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union.
It doesn't, okay. So it's not like Westminster is going to be all by itself?
No, no, no.
It's still part of the Supervisory Union?
Yeah, Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union essentially is a service set up to 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 provide services for the for the member districts. We wouldn't change, I mean, we could theoretically at some point vote to become part of some other Supervisory Union and have to get permission through the State Board of Education or something. But this isn't, this has no bearing on that.
It just doesn't say that in any of the articles. Doesn't mention Northeast Supervisory Union.
Okay.
And it seems though.
It should.
It should.
Yeah, just to clarify. I I think it doesn't mention it because it's not a question that that has come up, but the the answer is fairly clear.
Okay.
As a taxpayer too, I want to be clear though, you are, if you if you are successful, you are restoring the autonomy of Westminster to control the school board.
Correct.
Its budget and policy.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can this bounce? Can you can we actually get this done and then a few months later, they overrule us and we got to go back to what we have? Do if we do, do we actually have to go back to another election or will it just fall back to where it currently is?
If the towns go through and vote, vote, you know, if Westminster votes for this and Athens and Grafton vote to essentially approve the withdrawal, this it has to go before the State Board of Education. They, the Secretary of Education, they have to approve it. They have to approve it based on a couple of fairly narrow measures. And and that's what Larry Slayson is referring to in this letter. That is, you have to you have to show that the economics of the merged district have improved over the economics of the separate districts. You have to show that the that the quality of education has not changed. And so they they felt they had to do that. In the case of Halifax and Reedsboro, they approved it. I I think that if they don't approve it, the votes are invalid. It just stays the way it is. It stays the way it is until the Secretary of Education approves the withdrawal.
And how does this happen, of course, according to the legislature? Understood, right.
So we would have to fund the election?
Wouldn't necessarily have to be an Australian ballot, but given the fact that it's winter and having a town meeting would be difficult. But yeah, Australia ballot, you know, printing the ballots and getting the whole shebang, but you know.
Russ, was there around a couple grand a year to be done?
Town meetings typically run between 2,500 and 3,500.
For the?
For the whole thing, the the printing of the ballots, the mailings, the the getting the card, getting the the card for the for the tally. All of all of it. Typically, it's personnel, et cetera.
And David, what do you think of this recommendation of Larry Slayson? And maybe the answer is pretty, careful evaluation by the study committed of committee of how Westminster's withdrawal will affect educational offerings, et cetera, et cetera, so on and so forth, to essentially be the way they were before the forced merger, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Right.
Last thing for me, because I know we spoke about it. It just still bonds me, fellow citizens and taxpayers, the whole reference to withdraw from a forced merger. I just want to reiterate the fact that the town voted against this merger.
As did Athens, as did Grafton.
Thank you.
This is, this path has opened up to do it, even though we were dealing with it for such a long time.
It's it I I think the path was always there, but the it was just rediscovered. I mean, this the law about withdrawing from a a unified district has been there, I think, since the 1960s or something. And Halifax, somebody in Halifax and Reedsboro investigated it and said, hey, we can do this. So, yeah.
And the way he wrote it up, since my last meeting, is obviously one and two have to pass, but you get into, I mean, did they look at if the voter somehow misunderstanding what they're voting for and all of a sudden you get to an article where it says one and two are formed and you're giving the select board permission to form a town school district? If they vote that down, what the heck would that mean? Because now you got to pass, but yet, on the hand, now you don't have permission from anybody to have a vote. That's kind of a weird one, I thought, when I read it.
Yeah, yeah. I I.
Why why all of them? Why not just?
I think it should be one article.
I just mean, it's like, maybe one article that says it would give the select board authority to continue on and closing the deal or something, but to ask these and you're going to just now sit there and scratch your head.
I I think that, yeah, and and when Fletcher sent me this, he said, I think I might be thinking too hard. I think that all of these, if especially if we're an Australian ballot, I would word it as, shall the voters of the town of Westminster approve the withdrawal? Give the select board authority to to set up a new district. Give them the authority to take actions necessary to repeat, to get back the school, the property, the property, the school property, and give the select board authority to appoint some school board members until there's an election. I think that that would be, to my mind, it should just be one, one article, so you don't wind up in exactly that kind of position. Most especially, if it were if it were a town meeting where everyone were present and could talk about it. That's something different, and they could they could amend these things on the floor and so on. But if it were an Australian, if you chose to do an Australian ballot, I think it should be one, one.
Because the other thing is part of it, one of it says to form a Westminster Town School District, and then the next part says to return the town to the Westminster School District. And I was a little confused over that because if you're going to form one, you're not going to return it. And is that what we're going to do? You would say, yes, once we pass it, we're going to return back to the school board system that we had and structure.
Well, there is no, there is no school board, school district to return to at this point, it was declared null and void.
So keep going. What do you need from them tonight?
I think that the select board needs to to or the town needs to schedule a date to hold a vote and then firm up these articles or article fairly quickly and and make up your mind whether you want an Australian ballot or a special town meeting. And.
So first, they need to vote whether to proceed.
Yeah.
Formally.
Yeah.
And then.
Before we leave.
Then we have time to create more more information, verbiage, the warning.
The warning.
Post the warning.
Yeah.
All of that.
And if we vote for holding the meeting, we would have to set a date tonight also?
You got to go back in the calendar.
You know it has to be before, can't be any any later than December 15th. You know that posting has to be between November 5th and November 15th. That's 30 to 40 days to post a legal town meeting. So that's how much time you have, which is not much.
Pretty close.
It's pretty close.
So we have to do it this evening?
We have, we got one more meeting to do, is about it?
No.
No, you don't. You don't have another meeting until.
At least for the warning. Does the warning have to have the articles? Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Well, it's.
I move.
Yes. Okay, what is your motion, Mr. Beatty?
That the select board authorized to hold a special.
Town meeting.
Town meeting. Well, I'm not, I'm just trying to decide whether it would be easier to do an Australian ballot than it would be at a.
I don't think honestly, at that point, you're going to have a choice. The way everything is going right now.
We're not going to be able to have a special town meeting.
That's correct.
Absolutely no question about that. So I'm thinking that we might just as well expect we're going to do it by Australian ballot.
Totally agree.
And just move on to that.
So terminology, it wouldn't be a town meeting, it would be just a motion.
It would be an Australian.
Vote by.
A vote by Australian ballot to withdraw from the Wyndham Northeast Union Grammar School District.
Forced merger. Use the forced merger.
I don't want to complicate things, I don't. Because I'm not a lawyer either. Will that will that pass muster under this statute? I hate to die, I hate to die, I boot him on a technicality where they come back to us and say, you should have had a town meeting.
No, 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 you can have an Australian ballot.
Okay.
Right, and it is a town meeting. That is considered a town meeting. That's why it's warned and and.
Good.
And in your motion, Sheldon, are you setting a date?
To be held before December, what, a specific date or it just has to be done before December 15th? And we can firm that up?
We we got to get the wording and such that that will.
Let's let's deal, let's deal with that and then we'll we'll, that will determine the date, I think.
Okay.
So what's your motion again now? Just go ahead and.
That we vote to have an Australian ballot to withdraw from.
The forced merger.
The forced merger district that we're now in.
Wyndham Northeast Union School District, is that the formal name?
That is good.
Wyndham North Wyndham Northeast Union School District.
Elementary school.
Elementary school district.
Okay.
It never says elementary, I kept seeing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Elementary school, okay.
Is that clear? Reread.
Reread. We'll write it down.
Vote by Australian ballot to draw from Wyndham Northeast Supra Union Forced Merger Elementary School.
Grammar School.
Elementary.
What is the form?
And I say, please, please second.
Will the date be determined? The date be determined?
Correct.
You want to express your opinion?
Yeah, I think you can, I honestly don't think you can pick a date tonight. It's going to take legal counsel and and this committee to to work.
Well, we could put it in the motion to pick the date before.
Prior to.
Prior to. Prior to December 16th.
Is that what it is?
Right? Yeah, yeah. Prior to December 16th.
We put that in, it would be fine.
He said, no, we did it in 12 15, so now you're setting 12 15.
I thought it was 15.
I said before the 16th, so making it for 15.
Maybe it would be more than that.
I don't want to add anything to this.
All right. So the motion is to hold an Australian ballot to vote on whether to withdraw from the forced merger school district at a date before December, on or before December 15th. Any more discussion about this?
Just want to get the right title. Isn't it Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the word union. Okay, that's all.
Okay, elementary comes after union or before?
Comes after.
Thank you, okay. Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, is there any more discussion? All in favor, and it's been seconded, is someone seconded?
First.
Second, okay. All in favor, both say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously? Okay, thank you. So how will we determine this and get the article together? Is that something Larry needs to do, Fletcher?
I don't want to try to hedge between Fletcher and and Larry, but between the two of them, they should come up with the the one large, very detailed or article.
And they need to do that before November?
They need to do it from the.
Yeah.
And I know Larry Slayson is right out straight.
They all do.
Well, this is going to be tough.
And who is going to, are you taking the lead on that?
I'd be happy to send them both an email with my ideas of what the article is. Because the points from from the the points of the article.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, then I won't.
And maybe you just let them know officially that the select board, I can do that.
Yeah. Keep it simple. Keep it simple, I know.
Simple isn't the subject.
It's going to do it.
It's going to be complicated.
Okay, great. Anything else on that issue? Thank you, David, we appreciate your.
Thank you.
Petitions for allocations, new letters.
This is just a house cleaning item. You asked for letters from the all the entities that needed to have signatures that you passed that said they don't need, they just needed to write a letter. Well, the last two are in your packet. The third one, I I tried to email and wasn't as clear as I could have been. So this is the letter from Sevitz. They are, they are getting signatures because they do not want to leave it in your hands to to determine what you're going to put on the warning. They want the $9,534 placed on the warning. So that's what they're working on now.
Thank you. Drafting new personal policy update. Working on it?
Yeah, I'm still waiting and then I'll get it. You'd wait for me.
I know, it's a very busy time, so.
Busy time, and I still, I kind of dug a hole because I started reading more about COVID-19, how we don't have anything in there. So I sent for two other towns and they're working on it at the same time. I was trying to get a hold of the state because no question, we come to leave of Athens and Steve and stuff, there's nothing written about how COVID-19 affects it.
Yeah.
So that's, I thought I'd get it and then get together with Kevin, go over what the two, I'm working with three different towns and they're working on it.
Yeah.
So that's what.
Thank you very much. Draft budget, pages three and four. Let me look at these.
So just to refresh your memory, blue are, um, still waiting for information. Green is, uh, new information from what you, you finished last meeting, so we should go over that on page two, uh, the treasurer's line items. And then go on to page three.
Right, let's do that. Did you say, um, did you wanna go with, uh, the blue ones?
No, blue ones, we don't have any information on still.
Yeah, okay.
What page are we starting? Get us the...
Page two.
Right, okay.
So the, what's changed is I went with our treasurer through these line items, and, um, this is what he, um, deemed acceptable.
Do you see how that's any different? That's what we had before the last time, pending, we called it pending, okay?
Yeah. So any questions, concerns? There are none, I'm gonna turn those to black. Page three. The audit, uh, this year is, uh, the proposed FY twenty-two is the large audit, that's the three day. Um, we used to carry twenty, um, two thousand or something like that, and that was just too much. We, um, you have to look at the actual cost of FY nineteen. That was the large audit, and it was only seventeen one hundred. Giving a little for inflation, we made that nineteen thousand. Would, seems though that would be, uh, a fair assessment of what it will cost.
It's the same time audit, over three years, big audit. Yeah. Anything else on the audit, does anyone wanna talk about that?
What is the lister, yeah?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm wondering about, so...
I didn't hear you.
Uh, lister, for, I don't know, it's pretty, yeah, so there's an increase in that, and that's because, do we have another lister yet?
We do not, but we're, we have two prospects. Um, I have not done the assessor trainer through, um, uh, NEMR yet. Um, haven't asked for pricing for some upcoming year, so that one will still be in blue.
Yeah.
But the listers, um, that is just the, uh, two point five percent increase from what they had. Supplies stayed the same. Computer, the...
Well, I'll just go back to listers, so in FY twenty, they were eighty-five hundred, and now it's configuring fourteen thousand, is that because they're doing more work now?
That's correct, they're, um, but again, there's only two of them, so this is a deceiving number, because it will be a little bit less than that by the time this is, this year's done. But when we do get all three of them back on board, that's, um, the realistic number. Eighteen and a half hours per week, times fifty-two, times fourteen, fifteen dollars and forty cents.
What is, uh, on your computer, what's, what's Kama?
Kama is their, um, software program that all the data goes into and calculates their information they need.
And what is this new member, what does that mean? Under, uh, I'm going down to new subscriptions and meetings.
There'll probably be some training needed, and so, um, I wrote that memo in there just because we will have a new, uh, person, so there will be some additional, uh, training needed. We carried it for last year but didn't use it, we didn't get the third person, but this year we'll, uh, definitely be...
Why is mapping sold at that? Why do we spend, I can't remind you why we spent forty-nine hundred dollars, one year, nothing another year?
That was going digitized, so we had a, a huge surge of, of need. Uh, so that they, now the mapping is, is done both electronically and on paper for us.
So we spent no money on it last year, and how much have we spent so far this year?
Uh, probably in the zero range, because we don't do it every, uh, you know, six months. We do it once a year to get the updates of the subdivisions, and then it's by how much need is there? Is there any, uh, subdivisions, did they happen that year? So we'll, we, we'll be getting new, new mappings, um, this spring.
So that's essentially insurance to cover whatever we might have to spend.
I'm sorry?
That's insurance to cover what, insurance to cover what we might have to...
Typically costs around a thousand dollars, and with a little bit of, of, um, update on the digitized portion too. So it's twelve hundred dollars.
Anything else on the, uh, listers?
No.
Town clerk?
With what you have the new clerk at, that is two point five percent.
Oh, okay, so she's currently at forty-one, didn't prefer to hire at forty-one thousand, and so this is the, okay, hold up.
The next ones, I have not gone through with the clerks because of people changing seats, but I would like to give them the opportunity to, um, do their office supplies down through, um, to the, to the planning board, so that one should be all tabled until I can talk to them about it.
Okay. Useful. Planning board. You expect these to be the same, they're blue, but do you...
Uh, there's, there's a couple increases because they are working on the town plan, and that entails, um, uh, a lot more advertising for public hearings, and, um, possibly some more supplies for, um, even, even, you know, little pastries for the meetings and et cetera, to entice people to, to actually participate in, in that. So, um, the budget is very basic as it is, but it has been increased a little bit, um, because of the town plan.
When do they expect that to be?
We don't have to have it in place until, uh, twenty twenty-three, at the end of the, the draft. So you'll be getting that, um, at the end of the next year.
On page four. I thought we were just doing two and three. No, we, we did one and two last time, we're doing three and four, we just went back.
Oh, three.
Yes, and, um, we look at some, there are some things that we didn't finalize, but...
Developmentary Board, as you can see, is held firm. Um, everything seems to be working very well, and they're very active.
In those years, I have a question, um, just to go back to like the planning, where the last, before FY seventeen through FY twenty, well FY eighteen, nineteen, twenty, essentially the planning board spent no money, none of their legal fees, none of their printing, et cetera. So they just spent none of that. So the money that was allocated, does that essentially go into the surplus?
It, it does, it goes, it stays in the general fund.
Thank you. Zoning administration?
Again, the zoning wage, um, is two point five percent. Zoning clerk, two point five percent. Supplies, advertising, legal fees, and travel seems to all be working well.
There aren't any legal fees, we have not done anything with legal fees in a while?
Um, luckily we haven't, um, but in this year, we are going to have some. Um, I just needed to, um, have Larry write a letter for, um, an appeal that we, um, had. And, um, so that's what it's for, is to, um, help with town decisions on different properties when people have a different opinion of what bylaw states, so... We try to keep it at a minimum, but sometimes it can't be helped.
Okay, municipal buildings.
Okay, um, weekly cleaning, we are going to see that we're running over this year's budget by, um, about twenty-five hundred dollars, um, up to three thousand because of the COVID cleaning. We are doing twice as much, um, with our cleaning, um, company. They're, um, sterilizing all of the doorknobs and, um, anything that, that could possibly be touched by public. So, um, we wanna continue that until this is over with. Um, it's protecting the, not only people, our visitors, but our employees also.
Offsite stores, so do we need that as a line item, or, I mean, we have no, we don't require offsite stores?
I've been leaving it on because you have monies that we've spent in the past years. So, long story short, um, it won't go away until those are all zeroed.
Supplies, obviously a little more for COVID, yeah?
Yeah. Building improvements, it has been left on there, um, through a conversation that we had a couple years ago, that if you had a, a building improvement that was not part of the normal maintenance, that we would be able to put in that line item. Um, I don't see anything this year coming up that's urgent.
Not even the West West's, the community house or something?
If you were going to do, you know, something substantial, like a...
A paint job.
Yeah.
You know, next door, we were talking about doing the, uh, building, or we gotta do something about the building for listeners for the cemetery.
That, the garage thing, yeah.
Yeah, because we were talking about that the last couple of years. New floor calls down.
Yeah, new floor calls down, that's right.
Should you do it this year? Next year?
This year, I'd like to put our efforts into the survey that we've been talking about.
At the cemetery?
At the cemetery, that comes up further in your agenda.
Boots or anything at this point in time, for us, it's not a burden, it seems like. As the snow takes it down, and then we'll clean it up.
Okay. Uh, municipal buildings, maintenance.
Again, that covers them all, so that's, um, my roof on the town hall, which is going to have to be, uh, re, um, pointed for, um, replacement of shingles. Our slate is, um, has moved, that's a yearly thing. We have, uh, the post office, which right now sits, knock on wood, pretty, pretty solid. We do have a, a dirt floor that we're still, um, been kind of pushing off, that we were going to put a floor in there to get rid of the moisture. But at this point, I haven't heard any substantial complaining, so I've been kind of holding off. The West West, um, was approved at a thousand dollars years and years ago, so we can just carry it, um, for their use. They painted a little last year, but they've got some more to do, so they'll be using some more. Town garage, uh, obviously it's the same thing, we, we put it on there, but again, we're not doing anything with it yet. The post office, um, maintenance is, is a line that we get from offsetting taxes. So we get it, we pay that, and we get it back. I'm sorry, I crossed the lines. Post office maintenance is, post office maintenance, and post office taxes is the, is the contracted payback.
What, what do you mean payback?
We pay the taxes, and then, and then they pay them back. E D one?
Your crystal ball is better than mine, power to you, but if the, if it maintains the, the level we're at now, we're gonna be fine. If we spike, which we did in two thousand nineteen, um, then it becomes right on the verge. So at this point, it looks like that number is favorable, but again...
And is that based on the current price, like right now?
It is based on the current usage and, and the current price that we're experiencing right now. But I think it should be fair that we're not going to see that just up one big lump.
Now that we put a bunch of pumps upstairs, we're heating upstairs, it should be less anyways, you know what I'm saying?
That's correct, but they, this is again, not just that building, it's not just the town hall, it's...
We, we've improved...
We have, we've, we've ventilated, and that price went down a lot.
And we're cooling it as well, so...
Right.
It's figures to the electricity line.
Right, our electric rates have gone, um, up a lot, and, um, if you read a lot about electricity, um, the spikes are due to, to, um, the, the solar input and, and the, um, maintenance of the lines are not being covered by the normal rates as they used to do. So we all experienced a, a little bump. Well, that little bump turned into quite a bump, if you've watched your own at home, it's, it's increased, um, substantially. Well, that's what we're seeing, but we are also contributing to, with that usage with the heat pumps. We're saving it in fuel, but we're, we're spending a little bit more with the heat pumps. Um, but we're also making that building use, the usage three hundred and sixty-five days of the year now, where before, you, you couldn't do that, anything in the wintertime because it was so cold, and in the summertime, it was so hot that you couldn't do anything. Now we are utilizing that space. Upstairs at the town hall.
Oh, okay.
The heat pumps.
Yeah.
Didn't we, didn't we have some, back when all these solar firms were going into Westminster, didn't we have some interest in having us sign on to...
They wanted to buy part of the program, E D, by the National Guard, and they have to build it up up there, yeah.
We had a, we've had a couple opportunities, but at only eleven thousand dollars of use, the, um, as soon as they found out how much we used and, and actually spend, they all went, oh, well, you, you, you know, we're not really interested in grabbing you because you don't spend enough. So we kind of lost our, our pull with them, because again, we don't use enough. We don't only have the, the post office, the, the town garage, um, and we do have some lights that we, um, streetlights that we pay for. What else? Oh, at the, uh, the Westminster West, um, sand, um, yard, we have a building with, with, uh, electricity that we plug in, uh, tobacco typically there. So we don't have a lot of use for what they were really wanting us to participate in, so...
But it is interesting, I was up, up above looking last this weekend, and I didn't realize when you go to Westminster, how many solar panels we have now. There's a big area plus the method, that, that was interesting to, my thinking was, what if we actually produce enough electricity in Westminster to be self-sustained? You know how a lot of towns wanna know that? You know how a lot of towns want to know that?
Right.
We've got to be getting close because there's
You'll never know that. No, it all goes to Green Mountain Power and
No, but you could tell with the whole, some of you would know, you know, they come back and say, the goal is to have town self-sufficiency, though. You've got to believe we produce a lot of power.
We've exceeded the 2050 goal for
I came out to see you working yesterday, and I'm looking at that prime of that current hack. Man, that is huge.
It is, like I said, this weekend when I was flying, when you look down, and it's like, man, between that where the basin is, that is a huge, huge amount, so.
Okay, unless we have any comments on the water, which seem to be about the same.
It's gone up a little bit. They did some substantial improvements this past year, and rates did go up just a smidge.
Thank you. So I'm thinking I will do two more pages, but let's go through to the cemetery next time, because that takes in the town garage. So we'll finish the town garage, come to the cemetery. Does that make sense?
So what pages are those, just two?
They are five, six, and then seven, just the first item, first items until we get to the cemetery. Thank you, appreciate that. All right, quarterly financials, questions?
I gave the two last meeting and tabled it, in case you had any questions that you wanted to ask about this meeting. Really, nothing jumped out at me for revenue or expenditures. They are all within the realm of
I have a quick question, in the back, in the governmental expense of the pit, the study on gravel pit, so
What page are you on?
I'm on the very last one, eight, I guess. So we spent $4,500, and we have $5,500, so will that go into general fund? The money we did not spend on the
We didn't, it's the only place in your American Ford, so if it doesn't go
Right, so it just goes into the general fund.
I'm sorry, what's your question, the Hemwood Hill project?
No, no, gravel pit study. $10,000 was voted, we only spent $4,500, so
That's correct, and yes, the remainder will stay into the budget, yes, into the general fund.
My next one, one last question, we're talking about, I'm not sure if it's here, but don't like the property taxes, people being slow about paying the property taxes because of the whole issue. Is that going to cause us problems?
It isn't right now. We have, again, that $100,000 in the general fund to cover our expenses. That was the conversation that we had last night with the fire department. They are guaranteed 100 percent. School is guaranteed 100 percent. And after the first billing, we gave them 50 percent. And we averaged about 43 percent. So there is a loss there. Is it lower this year than it was last? Yes, it is. Is it at a concern level? No. People are working at it.
Yeah.
It's a little bit slower, but it is being whittled off at great rates. So nothing to really get very concerned about yet.
Thank you. Anything else on the quarterly financials? Cemetery survey bids.
I saw management has had a quote from Deverno Associates. I expected it to be in your packet, and I, for some reason, must have left it on my desk because you should have had it. I am requesting that, because it's such a specialized request for a surveyor to not only survey the land, which is the easy part, it's to go through every site and find the graves, working with our sextons to, so that we can find out how many open spots we really do have. Our rows are skewed, they're not, on a map, people have drawn very straight lines, and they're not like that on the ground. So, and rightly so, and there's a bunch of them that are like that. The markers are there, but the sod has grown over them if they bought them, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago. We need to locate them again. That's not okay. We want to make sure that everything's clean and neat. So the range he gave me was, will exceed our budget that we have in there, but not by a ton. I, if I get the approval, I can tell you the range, but if I don't, then I don't want to wreck the fair bidding process. But if you guys deem it as I think it should be, it's a very specialized task. It's not, every surveyor is going to be interested, and not every surveyor is going to have the history with Westminster to do this. Deverno Associates have done this once before, and we just need to update that information and move forward to getting new information. So I'm requesting that we opt not to bid this out and take this very reasonable range of cost and run with it. And I'll tell you what it is if you think I'm on the right page, or if you're saying, no, 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 let's put it out to bid.
I don't know of any other surveyor, that's unfortunate.
Let me give you the range then, because this isn't fair for you guys. $2,800 to $3,200 is the range that he gave me. It's not huge money. It's not money that is going to be wasted by any stretch. It's going to save us thousands of dollars in creating a new cemetery when this one is still at 30, 40, 50 lots that we don't even know about. So
How are we going to go about finding these corner markers on these lots that are on the ground?
They have, once they get started, how they did it last time, is the sextons will be working with him, and he will be locating what the exact diameter of a lot should be, so that we're narrowing it down to the size of his paper, trying to find the stone. When Kevin and I would go out there, and we'd be looking at the size of the table, trying to find the little square cornerstone. So it's, once they get started, once you get on a row, it goes relatively fast. And that was according to Joe Deverno and Chris Potter, who have both done it in different areas. So I'm hoping that that's a, that's a
I don't want to lose weight in order to get into mine.
I can afford to lose it in the weight, Toby. Anyway, so, and nowadays, families are buying less lots because they're placing for cremations in them. So this cemetery could last us, gosh, it could go 20 more years realistically. So I think this 2,800 to 3,200 is well worth the money to get it done and done right.
I don't think it is.
Wow, motion on it, huh?
I do.
So move, make a motion to spend not to exceed
$3,200.
$3,200 to survey the Westminster West Cemetery for
I'll second.
Move and second to spend not more than $3,200 to survey Westminster West Cemetery. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You have to recuse yourself. Only kidding. Opposed? Okay. You can do it.
Was there a pause?
No, it was not, it was
I'm sorry.
A stupid joke.
I had my head down.
You don't need to hear it, that's fine. Social media committee, that's me. We did not meet, but I did talk to Eric Wells of Williston, they have a Facebook page. A nice one, but very basic. He calls it one-way information, only out of the town. He says it's a very good way to communicate with the town. They don't allow comment at this point. He's developing a set of guidelines for the few people who can post things. It's a little different than Westminster would be because they have a police department has their own page, and the fire department has their own page, so it's a bigger town. But I guess I'm looking for an okay to go ahead with the social media committee, and maybe, I think there might be somebody, we can do a draft Facebook page before, I'm assuming, with some guidelines for people, and start moving on it. Okay?
Knock yourself out.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah.
Yeah, but what about the media page?
Okay, that's it. I'll call the committee together, and we'll get working on it. New business, five-year history of health insurance.
Kevin asked about this, and I thought it would be just easier to put it in a chart form. So I went back to 2016, I could have gone a little bit further, but I figured the last five years was what you asked for, so that's what I gave you.
Most appreciated.
What I, as you're going to notice, or you probably already have noticed, that you know firm facts for a half a year. The other half a year is really very open-ended. You have no crystal ball that's going to tell you that health insurance is going to maintain its integrity. So I've been very careful not to make that fluctuate to a point where we can't afford it. So when we have a lean year, yes, we might have a little bit of overture there, but it also doesn't make our next increase flex to the point where it hurts. So as you can see, planned increase and actual increases were very close until you get to the, like, FY '21. I estimated, and it came in, you know, as a lot, lot less. So next year, we'll be able to, you know, counter that, and as you can see, we're planning only 2% increase. So if you play the game of history, you can win by just an average increase instead of spiking up and going down, and spiking up and going down. So anyway, that's what we've been doing, and
I don't understand this one, FY '21. Proved budget $162,000, amount spent $53,000.
It's only a third of the budget.
Okay, so that's why the 8.5 percent.
This takes into account that, not just the cost of our insurance, it's the fact that we've had people come and go.
That's another whole part of that game, Craig, you're exactly right. If you lose a single and get a family
You just lost, you
You just blew that right out of the proportion, so that's why, again, you play that game.
Appreciate it very much, yep, well done.
Any questions about that?
No, it's
Thanks, Russ, for doing that. Sale of 19.1 acres.
We sold 19.1 acres like that?
Do you have the tax? That's my question.
And we got a payment this time. And it's in, it's not in your packet. I was going to make copies, and I thought that would be a little overture. I can send this, pass this around to you to look at it. It is exactly the same amount that we had on the last one, which was $24,500. We got $5,000 down to hold the land. Closing date is on or before December 1st, but I do need an official approval from you folks to pass to Larry to make sure that this is all
But you need a name on that motion or not?
You should, and it's Delvina Kerney.
Delvina Kerney?
Anyone make the motion?
He's got it in his campaign, he'll let him do it, so.
Kevin, come on up here.
I move to accept the solicitation for sale of property at Pine Banks Road, Sale of Westminster to one Delvina Kerney of Rockingham County for the sum total of $24,500, of which $5,000 has been received and placed in escrow with the town of Westminster, providing a closing date for final sale of this position, and receipt of proceeds to the taxpayers of Westminster of December 1st, 2020, close of business.
I'll second that long motion.
Thank you.
Motion, you moved and seconded. No, he's still writing.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that. That guy should never let me read anything. You're getting a new sister, can I bottom the end?
Hope you're in.
We just had a good landing lesson, yeah, it was my fault, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And passing. Yoo-hoo, that's the last one, see that, I hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross, thank you.
Draft, draft of the audit.
In your package, you have the letter from the select board that authorizes. You have the letter from the management discussion and analysis, and then you have the actual draft budget. I today received the final draft, final, excuse me, the final version, which is not different than the drafts, but we are getting 12 hardened copies, bonded copies of that, and you'll get that when I get it. It's very good, it looks very, very good. The surplus this year will look to be about $245,118. That can be found on page 18, bottom line. Remembering that the $250,000 that's in the general fund for our new policy that we added money to last year is taken away from that. So the $495,118 minus the $250 is $245,118. So that will be needed to be discussed at a later meeting. So please look at it. I do have spare copies for the public if they so choose. It's a lot to send via email, so I do have copies, hard copies for people.
Thank you. Town report dedication, citizen of the year nominations.
This is just to get your minds thinking about that. You folks take care of the town report, and the citizen of the year was in the Gazette asking for people to do it. It happens quickly. It will be in December because we have to get photos and descriptions and all that. So next meeting, I will be asking you to go into executive session with your thoughts.
Do we have the nominations from last year?
I always give those to you also.
Yeah, okay, good, great.
And any new ones that you folks come up with for that weekend.
Great, thank you. Managers report.
Just a couple of quick things. We had another accident on Westminster West Road that took down some guardrails. I have sent a bill of 50, excuse me, $5,110 to USSAA Casualty Insurance Company regarding Lawrence and Francis Kornick. Francis was the one that was in the accident and took down our guardrails. And this is the third accident that we've had in Westminster that we've replaced guardrails and not been reimbursed. This one, I was given the full information to actually bill for, so I'm hoping to get response from this.
Answer a technical question, why is the invoice dated for April 27th, 2018?
Because it's a draft, and that would have been changed. Sorry, no, that's fine, good catch. And the last item, the conclusion And the last item, the conclusion of work on the town hall, which is the entrance area, the foyer, and bathrooms and the kitchen. We removed it last year from the contract. Are we interested in finishing this work for once and for all? Or are we going to not put it in FY22's budget? Something to think about. Tonight's on my managers report, so I don't need answers. I just need you to start thinking about it.
Do you have what costs would be back there?
Not off the top of my head, but it is the amount that they removed. And we might take that scope of work and reduce it. We had the foyer completely being re-done, so resanded, re-varnished, you know, really making it of the stairs and the, the floors all pristine. You might not want to do that this time, you might want to wait. The bathrooms, they, the fixtures need to be replaced. They're very old, low-profile. And then the kitchen area, we've got, the unit is all cleaned out and ready to go.
The kitchen area?
I'm sorry, the little kitchen, it's just a little, where we put our refrigerator and water, cooler, et cetera, it's just a, it's a little L. It's all done, I mean, meaning it's all shaped, it really looks good.
And then that organic bathroom is so weird.
Oh, that's the handy guy?
It's a handy bathroom.
I know it is, but it's just...
My law.
Compared to the rest of the room.
Was there any, I can't remember whether you told me this or not. Was there any, was there a scope of things that they were going to do as far as the woodwork and so forth?
Yes.
We never made a motion during the executive session, which we were supposed to go someplace.
Well, I was assuming we did that after other business. Do we do that, or?
Yeah, that's where you go anyway.
Yeah, we just get this other stuff out of the, so boards and commissions?
There's nothing to report.
Other business?
I do. Just to be, everybody on the same page, luminaries are filling out.
Oh, what's the one here, okay, good, so what do you need?
One thing that COVID-19 is not going to mess with.
Shouldn't. I was thinking about that on the way here tonight, that...
So what do you need, some volunteers, some info out there?
Yeah, I'm going to touch base with the door, you're not at it anyway.
Oh, good.
Keep me in the loop, Sheldon, I'll make sure it's in the Gazette.
Okay.
All that.
So they're late to get started, I'm literally sharing it about, so. Okay, I'm in.
Date of next meeting?
Okay, so it falls on the 11th, which is Veterans Day. What is your pleasure for that?
I would be happy to have it on the Tuesday before, but I guess we could also have one Thursday, Tuesday's a problem.
Thursday, I can't, I have a, one of them solid ways I can get out of the meeting, but I...
I have a problem with the 10th.
Tuesday's fine with me as well.
Okay, let's make it Tuesday, November 10th, 6:30, same place. Who hasn't picked this out yet, good. Now we need a motion to go into executive session on two personal matters.
Move to go into executive session on two personal matters.
Move and second to go into executive session, all in favor?
I did.
Sheldon moved it.
Craig seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?